With item number one, as far with the engineers getting paid. We were gonna go ahead and make get a motion, make a motion to the Rio County Engineer, Ratan Garcia, be paid for the full eighty hours that she has worked. So I'm making the motion that she gets paid the full forty hour, eighty hours that she has worked. At the regular salary she's been getting.
Did you want to give them the breakdown, Crystal, too? Just for.
The total hour could be eighty hours, fifty-seven hours of salary, twenty-three hours of sick.
Okay. How many, how many was twenty-three?
Twenty-three hours of sick.
Yeah, fifty-seven. Okay. Yeah, I need a motion on that. I need a second to go ahead and get it approved.
Judge, I move. I mean, I'll second your motion.
Do you want to, Neda?
Judge, I second.
Okay. Motion made by myself, Judge, and then seconded by Commissioner Carlos Alles, all in favor? One, two, three, four, one, one. Against, against, okay. And motion passes. Now we go to item number two. Rio County Commission Court request present to chapter five-five-two of the Texas government for the public to hear by giving notice that the commission for the Rio County of Texas will convene a special session on the nineteenth of November, twenty-twenty-one at two P M. to receive public comment on the redistricting of county election, Justice of Peace and Commission's Court precincts, after the public hearing, the Commission's Court will take up for consideration and to take possible action regarding one or more alternative plans for the redistricting of county commissioners' court precincts. The core reserves the right to take any and all appropriate actions regarding the redistricting of Rio County political boundaries, including the acceptance of new boundaries for the Commission's Court precincts, modification of any boundaries and or tabling depending proposal for later consideration and or action. Want us to start on the precinct lines?
Judge, I will. Mr. Riley, thank you for your proposals. Uh, I think that we are looking mainly at proposal A and proposal B that you submitted.
Okay.
I don't think we're interested in proposal C at this time, anyway. Excuse me.
Very good.
Very good.
So I can share my screen if you want, or? That, I believe, is proposal.
Well, I don't have requests.
Yes, sir. I think so. Get somebody to print.
Because their company is able to. Sir, uh, do you by any chance have an option to, uh, it'll be in three ellipses next to your, uh, that button you use to share?
Okay.
Do you have an option to share control?
I do not see that option.
Okay, no problem.
Robert, you want to ask my clerk to make a couple of copies? Yes, so we can hand out, so we can hand out.
Oh, got you.
Please.
Judge, this is, uh, we are now allowed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Want to know, we do have the, the precinct numbered correctly, so.
No, I'll do, yes.
Finally.
Finally.
Yeah. Do you have any comments, Carlos? Do you have any comments on the maps provided?
I would like to see, and I've said this before, the straight lines, if we could. I'm not already concerned about, uh, anybody saying things that, uh, hey, uh, we're getting railroaded here or anything. It's, uh, it's pretty simple. It's pretty simple and changing the lines has to be done. And I don't care how long it's gonna take, because when I say it, it's about, I'm a part of it. So I don't have no decision-making authority. But, uh, I don't care if I'm here till ten o'clock at night. I want to see it done today. We really gotta get this done. We really gotta get this done.
You know, if, if I can touch on what you were saying earlier, Carlos, that this is not something, what? I've shared this with Commissioner Graff as well. This is not something that we necessarily want to do. Nobody wants to redistrict. Nobody wants to change their lines. But it's something that we have to do. Um, do I want to lose anybody? No. Commissioner Graff, do you want to lose anybody? No, I, but it's something we have to do. And I shared with Commissioner Graff earlier that, um, I'm, I'm leaning more towards proposed Plan B simply for the fact that I do not, I do not think that Moore is ready to change to a different precinct, even though we can assure them that they will have their own voting box. I, I just don't think that they're ready to agree with that. And even though precinct three will be losing a lot of, off of what's, uh, what's off of one-forty. I, in my opinion, I think that that would probably be the best route. I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, Commissioner Graff?
No, I, uh, I don't think Moore wants to leave precinct two.
I don't think so either.
But as long as they are going as one voting block, the, the whole community stays in Moore. They don't get to come to Pierceaw to vote. They're willing to accept it. But I, I won't say that they want to move either. I mean, I couldn't say that.
I'll, I'd like to concur with, with your comment that, uh, that's the will of, uh, the people in Moore. And I think, Judge, I don't know, would agree with that.
Yes, sir.
Clearly stated.
What's that?
We don't want to split. We want to stay a community. They use strong words like, uh, Moore United or something like that.
And I, I, I think that that they do want to remain in precinct two. Not, not that I would have a problem taking them. It's just my opinion. I, I'm leaning more towards Plan B. And like I said before, you know, I am gonna I, I am gonna have a substantial loss on one-forty up to Vinton, from Colorado to Vinton. That will be a substantial loss for me, but it's something that we have to do.
Thanks.
And I'm, I'm also looking here on your side in the Pierceaw area. We get to keep Constable Bregón. We get to keep him in the precinct. And also that top area that you were wanting to keep in your area. We get to keep that.
You know, I lose you on that.
Yeah. Always my, my grandma. Yeah. But this time you won't have to worry about my uncle running against you. Now I have to worry about it.
Go to, uh, Plan B. Can we take a look at that one first?
You bet.
You bet.
There's no way we can get him back.
I get Plan B, because, like, they did talk. It's not five years, shouldn't be so many, or technically, yeah, forty hours, it's a week.
We keep those while we're fighting.
They're saying that's okay.
You know, it's going down. Question to all of the precinct.
Oh, do it. Mr. Good, could I request, uh, that y'all vote on what, how y'all are leaning. This is just a survey. This is a file. Could I ask for that right now? I just kind of want to see. I'd like to see how many are in favor of Plan B.
I can ask, not a vote, but I can ask him which, oh.
This is nothing but based on what, what, based on what y'all have already looked at. You've had, uh, you've had some time.
The only guy I'd be worried about that, sir, is, uh, if we do take it to an official vote, if we do plan any more deviation from it, will we be allowed to deviate from Plan A and B?
I, I just want to get an idea of what everybody is doing, because I want to be able to figure out what everybody's thinking.
Okay.
And, and I may even attempt to persuade.
Yeah, I think if we go, we're asking for an opinion of, of, of an opinion, I think, not.
Yeah, what is your opinion, right?
I can, I can give you mine. Um, 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 between, it's gonna be between, uh, A and B.
Yeah.
And I will be leaning more towards B.
Mr. Graff, can I ask you?
A and B.
Yeah. See, I'm leaning toward B. In fact, I'm a strong supporter of B. I've had some time to look at it.
Commissioner Vela, have you had a chance to look at?
Yeah.
It would be, because you already have, you have right now from North Willow up to Trinity. So it, essentially what would happen is that little block on top, it would come and swing out to the side. So you, then instead of having all the way to West Trinity, you would have up to, up to Colorado Street all the way down to North Vinton. So all, all of that frontage right there, you would have that. Peace Street, I would have up to Color, you would have up to Colorado. On Peace Street, you would have up to West Colorado, and then I would have the top part of it.
Right.
You would have North Charing all the way up to West Trinity, what you currently have.
Okay, what about, uh, you can see fifteen-eighty-one, what's going on, um?
Fifteen-eighty-one.
Uh, I don't think we touched fifteen-eighty-one.
No, all, all we touched is, is inside the city limits.
There's some town, yes.
Yeah.
Precinct one.
Fifteen-eighty-three, Derbyan.
Yes.
Could I ask to, for them to enlarge it in the city, Pierceaw, to make it bigger?
I bet, Carlos, he should be able to hear you right here if you want. Oh, no?
He, he got it already. He got it for you.
Okay, well, what I want to look at the, the section here, okay, it, it, the, the smooth lines, it makes me, it makes it a little easier for me. I'm looking at this selflessly. But it would meet, uh, the specific people that I've had, uh, great concern over the moving over here. So to me, this is for my purposes, it is the most logical plan. And I want you to know, while y'all are in executive session, I just got bombarded with eighteen new laws that are gonna take effect. Yeah, so, uh, you know, it's, right now, it's real crazy times for me. And we're gonna have to work on this. And I know it's gonna take us at least a couple of weekends of work to get this thing straight. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be logical. Uh, people will understand clearly where, uh, they, they sit. Uh, it will address, in my opinion, uh, those specific candidates that raise concern. And it'll meet my ability to, uh, get my voter registration cards out to people. And Crystal won't be on me about spending too much money for having to, to redo that again. So, uh, for me, this is, this is, this was, if I had a vote, it would be for, for this plan. Thank you.
It's Plan B.
Yes, sir. I'm trying to kind of zoom out, just so we can see all the, the county as a whole. If you wouldn't mind, just want to take a look. That's probably the biggest line.
I think so. I agree.
I hate to lose that much frontage, but.
Don't be like, oh, that'll take a month.
Yeah, all of that right there, yeah.
Yeah.
All the way to Vinton.
No, it's, it's not much thing, but it's in the town, I presume.
Commissioner Graff, thoughts?
Oh, no, I was just trying to communicate to, 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 where all Plan B, uh, where, what's in this plan, you know, kids would basically go all the way to, not, not, not forget. Looks like there's, there's a couple of Supreme Court roads out.
Oh, okay.
Because it comes down.
Comes down.
Here's what come over around to fifteen-eighty-two.
Okay.
And then go out, uh, a little bit farther than I want to go. Did you see that? It comes off fifteen and
So did you take this, this little area right here?
No.
Plan B, are you taking it? What's that, forty, forty oh five?
I don't have a phone.
No, I think you went to Commissioner Vela.
Is it something mislabeled?
Oh, yeah, no.
No.
Nope.
No, this is the right one.
Somewhere else.
Because you're, you're still good. You still got three percent deviation.
We gotta decide by five o'clock. Question, so, do you have any? No, you, you do have a dog in the fight, because all the other precincts affect you.
You guys have so much more at stake in this and know those corners and boundaries. Um, I will follow the will of the court. I would like to finish it today, though.
Yes, I, I, I think we can. I, I think we should. We have, we have decent, we have good proposals in front of us. Um, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say it again. Um, this is not something that I want to do. This is not something I enjoy doing. But we need to do it. And I believe Plan B will be in the best interest of Rio County.
I'm also going Plan B. I think that's the best one. You're all are comfortable with it.
I, it, it hurts, it hurts my heart to, to have to do this. It, it does. I know all of those people out there and I hate to lose them, but the good thing is, is they will stay in Rio County. So that's good.
I got a question, Mr. Segura, we're going to reprove it today. It's gonna change everything for Monday? Or when is it gonna change?
It, it changes effective immediately, effectively.
Monday?
Yes, sir.
May I weigh in? May, may I? May I weigh in on that?
Mr. Riley?
Yes, sir. It, it takes effect immediately for election purposes.
Immediately for election purposes.
It takes effect January one, twenty-twenty-two.
For everything.
No.
I, I know, uh, in previous, uh, Commissioners Court, we did have a lot of input from, uh, Constable Bregón, and I'm glad Constable's about us here. His precinct will be affected as well. Would you like to weigh in at all, Constable?
I wasn't expecting to speak. Um, I just don't want to lose any already established voters, um, especially already building a relationship with them. Not saying I don't want to gain anybody, because ultimately, we're here to serve the entire county of Rio. But, um, I understand that it's something that needs to be done. And fortunately, I, I have no control over any of that, but that being said, I don't want to lose anybody, but more than willing to take on whoever it is that, that I do get.
And Constable, I can assure you, I, I do not take this decision lightly. I know.
But there's no more discussion than you. Do you want to entertain a motion to accept Plan B, the redistricting? Judge, after much deliberation and total, uh, I will make a motion to accept Plan B.
Okay.
Motion made by Commissioner Graff on Plan B, through your second.
Judge, I will second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carlos Alles, all in favor? Approved, thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Carlos.
Frank, will you give me the, the map?
Say that one right.
Frank, can you get me the map? I know you had already given me the order that they have to sign. Will you give me the map to attach to it?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Okay, I want to be able to get it signed today, but I'll get it signed first thing Monday morning.
And we'll be in touch on, with Mr. Segura, working with him on.
I, I have, I have a question, just a technical question. I just want to make sure that, uh, the the, the activities that have come up already, and they did make a decision. So does this, or does a, a separate motion have to be made? Uh, Joseph, this is for you. Does a, a separate, uh, motion have to be made to direct our, uh, county clerk to submit it to, uh, to the state? Because I'll tell you what, this is embarrassing to tell you, but, uh, we had the wrong map up there for a good two years.
If you'd like, I can, I think I can address that, Mr. Segura. I don't believe, we will help you with.
Please, please do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, with final filings with the, with the Secretary of State. And, and again, I'll be working with you very soon on the, on the election precinct lines.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Riley, we want to thank you for all you've done for the county here, and, uh, we couldn't have done it without your help. So we want to thank you very much for, the work that you've done for us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I apologize for our earlier technical issues, but we got them all resolved. So thank you very much. Congratulations on.
All right, thank you again. You stay safe out there, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, sir. Y'all have a great weekend. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Joseph, can you stick around, too? Is he still there?
Yes, I'm here, but I'm in the car. Hold on, let me pull over on the side of the road.
I know, I, I don't have a question right now, but, uh, I'll let you know before the end of the meeting.
Okay.
I don't want you to pull over yet.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, no documents, nothing like that, resolutions, only this one that we passed. I guess I did.
There are no documents to be signed at this time.
Signed at this time.
Okay. Uh, next to the, now bills payable. Any questions on the bills? Is this only for the check for the engineer?
Um, I, I did contact Pete, let him know that he had requested to issue payment immediately. Um, he did state that, uh, him and, uh, Mr. Alvarado are supposed to have a count. And he would believe that they can both come back. Uh, he did state that Rio Alvarado is the only one who can issue a check. Um, so I wasn't able to get it, because I'm not.
Did, did you catch that, Joseph?
Um, in and out. It came in and out. Basically, Rudy is not able to issue a check today.
Able to issue a check today?
Correct. Um, for, uh, uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, Mr. Alvarado is on his way out of town. And was not able to return back, uh, to issue a check.
Okay.
Definitely concerns on the bills to be paid. Um, I didn't want to bring, uh, so there's a chance to, on case, that you'll notice that we're paying uh, Texas Association of Townies, uh, we do have unemployment deficit for the first quarter, which is for February, February, March of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the unemployment has been really behind with, um, with providing us information, um, for deficit pay for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one is ten thousand four eight seven ninety. Um, I did sit down with the H R. We did pull over some. We do have some news that uh, it is taking a year process for them to, once the employee files, if we, um, the, once the employee files, we have, uh, certain amount of days to respond. And then, uh, and then the unemployment or tax will investigate, and if they find in favor, and they'll send a status, and then the H R can appeal the case. Once appealing, it's taken about a year to have a hearing. Uh, one of the employees who did file back in October of twenty-twenty, um, we did have their hearing about two weeks ago, and we were just informed that we won the hearing. So the employee will have to pay back everything that was issued. Um, so one by one, hopefully, we're able to be able to get this, the money. Um, if we continue to win appeals, but at this point, the county will be paying. But at this point, the county will be paying deficits for a while. Again, as I did explain, the Texas Association of Townies, that our budget to take a hit, this year, we've, we got to make sure that we're able to sustain these deficits for unemployment. So I just wanted to let the Richard Court know that we are aware and we're working, working on it to, to help, to perfect it.
Okay, I need a motion to pay the bills, please.
Judge, I move to allow bills payable.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Carlos Alas to pay the bills, so do you have a second? Second question, Graff, on our favor. Before we adjourn, let's ask Joshua, Lieutenant. Have you started already housing prisoners?
Yes, sir. Fortunately, we're starting at a low.
Yes, I know. Yeah. Again, good job. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it, sir.
How's it going, Charles?
Going good. It's, it's something different and new for the, for all of us.
Right.
We're starting to build a plan, and we're going to go forward for that.
Very good. Good job. Now I need a motion to adjourn.
Judge, I move to adjourn.
Motion been made by Commissioner Carlos Alas to adjourn. Do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Vela, on our favor. Approved, thank you. Thank you all.